Good morning. Welcome to the Dixon County Commission Meeting, September 8th, 2022. Would you please stand and join in the Plague's Loop?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Along with our printed agenda, we do have several items to add to the current agenda. And there's seven items in total. The first one is to review and consider the approval of a contract with HAMs regarding the transfer services. Also to consider the appointment of voting delegates for the 2022 K-Camp annual meeting. Also, the third one is to consider an approval of a contract for three bridge deck ceiling projects. The fourth item to add is a letter of support for the Harrington Housing Grant application. The fifth item we'll add is to consider the approval of a supplemental agreement for Project C-5089-01 for an off-system bridge. The sixth item is to consider the approval of the bids for the 2023-2024 bridge inspections. The seventh item is to consider a bid to remove and replace the roof at the highway shop. And I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? I will mention that sometimes we have our agenda made out two or three days in advance. And then some of these things come to our attention the day before and day of. And there's no reason just to push them back another week. So we go ahead and act on them if it's something that's, especially if it's a housekeeping type item. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motions and second say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next is the consent agenda. It includes the minutes of the September 1st meeting, also expenditures of $250,410.7 a security wire of $4,050, abatements of $5.08, one hand check of $110.28.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commission comments. Ron?
No comments.
Great. Earlier this morning, we did have a meeting with department heads and received updates on some of the various things that were going on. And also this evening, the Economic Development Committee, I'm ex officio. On behalf of the County Commission, I will attend that meeting this evening. That's all I have. We'll go ahead. We do not have any petitions or proclamations. This would be opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone that has a comment they would like to make, this would be your opportunity to do that. Since we do not have any public comments, we're going to go ahead and move along and have our reports. Brad?
Okay, this morning, I heard some comments from Martin and Derek about the inspection plans to deal with the inspection report of the landfills. In just kind of backing up a little bit, we, over the past, I guess, six months or a year, I think. And I think, you know, it's a period, over a period of time, I'm not sure what, but I think of those rainstorms that we had just deluges coming down, kind of contributed to the fact that we've had some pretty severe settling at both of our landfills, more so at this one here in Abilene. But if you own a landfill, you own that thing for life. That's the gift that keeps on giving truly. And so as the municipal solid waste below the ground decomposes, it creates voids and it settles. And so you have to keep those voids and that settling. And so during the inspection recently from KDHE, they noted that we had quite a bit of settling in a number of the pits here in Abilene and at the Harrington site. So we are in the process of devising a plan. We met yesterday with Martin and Derek and Janelle and I. And Derek is putting together a plan and documenting what we're going to do to take care of that, to submit back to KDHE. But the first big step that we're doing is we're hauling dirt and then putting it in those spots and then having it spread out. And as Martin said this morning in the department head meeting, he started this morning. He sent Janelle a picture, he gave it to me, of our trucks out there. We're purchasing dirt out from a local landowner just off a Jeep road, about 2200, and at a very good price. We are hauling it. We're going to just, Martin said it was easier for him to commit his resources as much as we can now for the next few weeks until we get it done. Rather than trying to piecemeal it and taking a year or two to get it accomplished. So we've got all seven of our dump trucks out there and a loader loading it up. They're hauling it into the transfer station and dumping it. And then Derek's got one of his staff on the loader there that's pushing it into the pits. And when we get it all leveled up, we'll take a loader or a maintainer out there and level it off and take care of the issues. So once they're done here, they'll move down to the Hope landfill and do the same. Although we haven't got a source of dirt yet there, but we've got some feels out trying to get somebody that will sell us dirt that's low, that's local or close. Obviously, the hauling is going to be a big ticket item if you have to take it very far. And we certainly don't want to haul it from Abilene clear down there for all the loads. Prelimarily, Martin estimated it'd take about 400 loads of dump truck loads. And as you heard him say, they're doing about 10 an hour this morning. So I think it'll go pretty quick. He was estimating three or four weeks to do it. We'll see what happens. But we are working on it. We're going to document our plan and send it back to KDHE. I'm sure they'll be more than pleased with that. And in that plan, we also have an annual inspection that we'll be doing to maintain and monitor it a little bit closer. So this is something that's going to go on forever. We just kind of got a little behind the eight ball. We settled more than we planned on. And I think the only thing I can attribute to that too is we had a couple really heavy rains. And without the rain, you don't have as much settling. And when we got that kind of moisture, a little bit, so.
The work from Navarre to Hope, if they bring in some of the turbine or windmill, would they have any excavation? Or is that the timing just maybe isn't right?
I don't know the timing. They'd be doing anything quick enough for us. We want to get something done sooner as possible, so. But I know that Martin called a couple of township board members down there that are local farmers and asking them if they knew anybody that needed to, wanted a pond dug out or
Clean out a ditch.
Clean out ditches or what have you. And so, and part of that plan also is, since you mentioned ditches, is in the future. When we're cleaning out ditches, we're not giving that dirt away. We're going to start stockpiling it at both transfers, both landfill stations. So that in the future, as what has happened, Derek can go out with a loader and haul it 150 yards and dump it in the void as opposed to having to cease all operations, erode and bridge to haul it with dump trucks. Because we clean ditches anyhow, and in the past, we've either given it to the local farmer or had to beg somebody to take it. So we weren't hauling it very far. But we're not going to need to anymore. If we can avoid it, we'll stockpile it at the transfer station. So it's a long-range plan we're working on, but it also takes care of the problem now, so. You've also got the staffing reports from Diane, as well as the budget reports. Sales tax is up a little bit more again this last month, which is good. It remains consistent. And so the issue we were talking about with the 901 advisory board and possible sales tax, I think would easily support what is needed there, if that's something that you're willing to support, so. Jerry told us earlier this week that he has one car that was taken into the shop and a deputy that had hit some type of an animal that went under the car. There wasn't apparently any damage. But shortly thereafter, the oil light came on and before she could get stopped, the engine had seized up, so. She had just recently had it serviced. We don't know for sure whether the oil plug didn't get put in correctly or whether the animal, you know, those can be pretty tough on undercarriage of a car, damaged an oil line or something. But according to the dealership over at Junction City, it appeared that the oil drain plug had come out. I would have thought that if they didn't put the plug in, it would have fallen, they wouldn't have made it out of the yard before the vehicle stopped or light come on. But I don't know the circumstances. Bottom line is it's going to take 7,000?
7,600.
7,600 to replace the engine. The vehicle's not that old, so. Not real good news, but it is what it is. So I hate that saying.
You can use it once a year.
Yeah, there you go. I just shot myself a bullet. Martin has two bridges that he would like to talk about vacating and being removed, primarily to get them off our bridge inspection list. One of them is at 3200 note, which we're familiar with. I think that's the old historic bridge. At one point, there was an effort afoot trying to restore that and remove it. And I think that's all
Died down.
Died down.
Bridge.
Yeah, I know that Doug was involved in part of that and he's passed away and
He was one that didn't want, while we were, when Vern was on, we were thinking about moving down to the historical side and we got some estimates. And we went just then he wasn't, he didn't want. We could use landowners' support if we didn't proceed with it.
So with that, that one, then the other one is down wherever it is, I forget, 1300 Avenue, which has been closed for several years. They're old fracture critical bridges that we have to pay to get inspected every year. And if we vacate them, kind of like we did with the other one up north.
Yeah, Ted Ryan Bridge.
We gave that one to the landowners because they wanted. These two, we would actually take down eventually. But if we vacate them like that, we no longer have to pay to inspect them.
Oh, in other words, if they're closed, you still have to inspect them?
We're still inspecting, yeah.
Yeah.
But by vacating them, it makes the public notice that we're going to go in, we're going to drop them and retrieve the steel and actually salvage them, so. But that is, you know, we're slowly getting all that fracture critical list down, but we're paying for that. And then that's two of the lists, it's on the list to be inspected next year. And the fracture critical ones are much more expensive than the, about double what the regular bridges are to inspect, so.
On each of your leg.
Yeah, true, yeah. So we'll bring that back to you for on the agenda next week for discussion and action. I didn't, I figured you had enough on this week's. And that one being, I didn't know whether 3200 was going to be touchy or not. But I wanted to put it on the agenda and make it so people, I didn't want to bring it up right away and then act on it.
Right, no. But like I said, it's been vacated now for about six, eight, seven years.
Last one I talked to about it was Audrey Sheetz. And I don't, they, you know, that's been years ago. And I don't know that there's any support for it anymore, but. I mean, there's a lot of things we'd like to do, but it's just not in the cards, so.
I mean, if I can be able to use it, why even?
Right.
It's just cost us money. I mean, that's what my argument would be. Hey, it's not usable. It's cost us money to inspect it.
Yeah. And it is a danger, having it there. People still walk across it and try to go across it.
Yeah, because I know I'm going to try to come by. Well, I think Martin has replaced cable a couple of times, so.
Yeah, we've got burns of dirt on either end. Those are both of those people from driving across them. But it doesn't keep somebody on an ATV or motorcycle from trying to
Weave around it.
Yeah, so.
You know, we did. We had a little tour and parked down the roadways and walked across the bridge on both sides, looked at it heard comments from township and
See, they're a bridge and, much like the one there south of Solomon, it used to be. I remember that as a kid going across it. But it just, I mean, it's from times past. It's dangerous to have them in place now, so. And then, like I mentioned in the work session, we've got a meeting, Martin and I, and Janelle are going to go over to Sling County next week and meet with their engineer and their, Martin's counterpart and our county administrator, kind of brainstorm on what it would take to extend that route across. And then talk about some of the BIL money, funding that might be available here in the near future for applying for a grant. You know, one of the requirements of that money that puts you higher on your list is that it's multi-agency. In this case, it'd be multi-county, which fits it to a T, so. There's a thought that maybe it will have a better chance of being funded and may never have an opportunity again to do that, so. But we'll be reporting back on that. And that's all I've got.
Doug?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. Under notices and communications, we have something from TC Energy. Also, the Eisenhower is to save the date. October 15th at the Eisenhower Presidential Library. And the keynote speaker will be Susan Eisenhower. And tickets, that's by reservation. Tickets are available. And then we've received a letter for wanting to organize a convention to be held. And he sent letters out to all 3,007 counties of the United States. And it has to do with the overreach of the federal government. And so he, he's wanting to propose that counties get together and act as one unit to restore county rights and more local rights. So that's available for review. Are there any other notifications or emails or comments any of you have received? I don't have anything left. I will mention earlier, we did have the Central Kansas Free Fair in here, and they've been having some meetings. And had a very successful free fair, but also discussed the rodeo and demolition derby and some of their plans. And they've been very communicative about that. And so I think there is some coverage in the newspaper. And so we did receive that update. We do not have any items on the agenda as far as resolutions or business, but we did have seven items that we added to the agenda. So Brad, if you'll go ahead and kind of give us the information on the review and consideration of the contract with HAMs on the transfer services.
Okay, as you know, we contract with HAMs to manage and transfer our municipal solid waste from Dickinson County to their facility in Perry, Kansas. We've done that since back in the early 70s. We have an extremely good relationship with HAMs, and I can't stress that more. They have been very good to work with. Even in light of the fire that we had a couple of years ago and being down, they sent crews in as they always do. Kept us going and they were there to help support us. We never got any extra bills other than the extra fuel charge and the extra hauling. They're really a very positive team member to work with and the best option for disposing of our municipal solid waste. As we just discussed, we've got two landfills that were closed back in the early 70s because of the expenses of operating them. And this is our only other option to get rid of the waste that we have for our citizens. So this contract is just an update that has been done, that we identified a number of deficiencies back when the fire occurred. The biggest being whose insurance covers what on the building. And much to my surprise, I think the HAMs surprised as well, their insurance was to cover our building. And so they did pay for a substantial amount of those repairs and did and took care of them. But at the time, they, they told, told me that we want to get this corrected in the future. We'll live up to our contract now, but we want to update it. So this contains language that updates who's, who covers what from the beginning all the way through to the costs of per ton of, to haul that waste. And so as you've seen in the versions and drafts that I've sent you, that increase, and we told you, the increase of that hauling fee is going up starting the first of the month for a number of reasons. But one of them is because the costs are going up. The second is because they're going to add a fourth trailer. And rather than us paying for the cost of the trailer, which I don't know what that would be, but it would be, the compact trailers wouldn't be cheap. They just added a dollar, a dollar and a half to the per ton to help compensate them for that investment, which is more than fair. So with this, well, probably the next action we'll want to take, or we would request that you take next week is we'll come back to you with a resolution to increase our gate fees starting the first of the month, first of October. So that we can not only top it, we don't get behind the eight ball, we're paying more to them than what we're charging. But also we can get more in line with what it takes to do that. So we have batted this back and forth several times between myself and HAMs and Doug and myself. And we finally got to a place where HAMs has agreed to all the changes, well, and K-Camp too, and only K-Camp out, our insurance provider. And we got to a point where we're all happy with, with the version. And you guys have seen the draft with the red lines that we took out. That was the last version. With the exception of a couple dramatical changes that Doug had me make this week. But it's our recommendation that we execute that agreement.
I will make notice. I did notice that, I don't know that we afford to do any more free weeks or days.
Well, that's true. It does cost us a substantial amount of money. And as, as they put in there, it costs them too if they're not prepared. So part of that contract is we have to give them 90 days notice if we're going to do a free, free landfill week. And, you know, we've added that around. Harrington called us a couple of weeks ago, want to know if we're going to do that this year. We did it last year. We don't do it, normally do it every other, every year. We do it every other year. I'm not so sure we're going to want to do it again in the future, you know?
The biggest thing is find out, you know, what it did cost us to be the, to set the bar and see what
And we've got that number. I don't remember what it was, but we can get it from Sarah, so. Seems to me like a $40,000 market. It sticks in my mind, but don't hold me to it.
Yeah.
I've gotten a number of calls of that. It's been a thing of the past. And communities really, really like to have that done. But maybe in the future, maybe the communities can pay for that day of, of waste to be held in and then instead of individuals. Because a lot of individuals gather tremendous amount of stuff that ends up sometimes in our road ditches and things like that. We want to make sure that we don't have that happen. But again, maybe the community needs to get together and pay that to haul into our landfill or your county. So I hate to see that stop is what I'm saying, is the community cleanup day or whatever they have. I hate to see that stop.
Well, and that probably is a more appropriate thing to do if you're in the unincorporated area. Your county pays for it. If you're in an incorporated city, your city would pay for it. It does help the cities too, so.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, I know last time I did it, though, I was surprised the number of people that thought they could bring, didn't have to pay for the steel they brought in. I mean,
Well, you can bring your steel and not let it down.
I mean, that's, you know, it was probably four or five when I was there and happened. You know, they didn't go into the trash compactor, went over to the recyclables.
Which we didn't weigh them. We just sent them over here and yeah.
Okay, any other questions? So we have these contracts to consider. And then the, as you mentioned, a fee schedule or something will be at a future date to discuss in the next few weeks, actually. Is there a motion to go ahead and approve this contract with HAMs?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? It is a highly regulated facility, and so the professionalism they offer and partnership is, we've had, as Brad mentioned, a good working relationship with them. All in favor of the motion and second say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So this will take care of that particular part. Place for signatures. The next item is the appointment of voting delegates at the K-Camp meeting, annual meeting, and that'll be in Overland Park.
Yeah, and actually, that's an error on my part. This is for the KAC voting delegate, not K-Camp.
Oh, KAC.
I think we've already done K-Camp afterward. So this is for the voting delegate and alternate position for first and second alternates for KAC.
I move the way of our chairman Lynn Pearson to be the K-Camp in honor of her
KAC.
KAC. Voting delegates.
Do we need two alternate delegates?
One third for the third and second delegate. Yeah, they asked for a delegate and a first alternate and a second alternate.
So you could add your
I'll be the third don, or the second alternate.
Is there a second?
I second it.
We have the motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are you an aye on that?
Yes, I said it from under my belt.
Okay. So unanimous. The third item that we've added to the agenda was to consider the approval of a contract, and this is for a deck ceiling project. And there's three of them. So Brad, do you want to tell us a little bit more about that?
Yes, you'd actually approved this back a month or two ago. This is actually the contracts with Swab Eaton to get it accomplished. Sent you to approve it, so we just need your approval of the contract documents. And there, the documents are specified, which you approved a couple of months ago. This is just the document writing. And then just, if you just fill out the signature and I'll go through and do the date on it, all the dates, so. And this is an agreement with Swab Eaton engineers.
So I would move that we officially approve the contract by signature on the three deck ceiling projects with Swab Eaton.
I'll second it.
We've got the motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And there's just one place to see it, sign in each booklet?
I think so, yes.
Ron, if you put your signature on there. So moving right along, we have a letter of support, and this is for a Harrington housing grant application. Brad, do you want to?
Yes, this is in regards to the Harrington MIAH, Moderate Income Housing Program Grant Application. This directed to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation in Topeka. And I'll just read the first paragraph. This is, "We as the elected board of commissioners of Dixie County would like to express our support for the city of Harrington's application for funding to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation's moderate income housing program." And then it specifies that it's important to Harrington and that you support that. So this comes as a request from Harrington to go along with their application, so.
I'm moving to approve the for the Harrington housing grant application.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and second, that we go ahead and send a letter of support for the Harrington housing grant application. Any discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one we have is a supplemental agreement. This was added to the agenda. And this is for an off-system bridge. So Brad, if you'd tell us a little bit more specifics on this off-system bridge.
This is in regards to the off-system grant application that we submitted and were awarded for the replacement of the bridge on 800 Avenue. We tried several times on that one and we finally got it approved. This is a supplemental agreement to the first agreement that you signed. And basically, all this one says that it's project, it's a cost of the project, PDOT share exceeds $100,000. We will only pay $100,000. A million dollars, I think.
Now, let's say that again, just so we're clear.
PDOT puts a cap on what they'll pay.
A million, not exceed it, it was not one million.
I got my number, my zero. It should not exceed that, but PDOT is to make sure that they got their money. They're not overextended. They're sending these out. So if it does go over that, we're going to have, we're agreeing to cover the excess, so.
But we would have opportunity to receive, we'd have opportunity to receive bids on that and review the bids before we put the final
Well, we would have the opportunity to talk to the contractor and see why it's going over. Bids have already come in, so, and it's been awarded, so.
I'm going to accept the approval of the supplemental agreement for number one project, C-5089-01, off-system bridge.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to approve the supplemental agreement contract as very good specified. Any other discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're almost through.
Fine.
The next item, and this is item number six, is to consider the approval of bids for the 2023/24 bridge inspections. And that was something we received bids on. And so Brad, looks like we had quite a few bids there.
We did. Martin put the RFP out for bids on our inspections for next year. He did receive four responses back, which is typical from local inspection firms. The low bid was from BG Consultants of Manhattan, from Brady Heston right here in our county for $26,000, 19660. And the high bid was from Swab Eaton of Manhattan for $43,120. It's our recommendation that we award BG Consultants the low bid with that, and they'll do a fine job in doing our inspections.
Uh huh, I second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And this is for BG Consultants of Manhattan. Opposed, motion carries. And this is for BG Consultants of Manhattan's. And, uh, is there a?
Any time?
No, I just fill out paperwork.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go easy on that one. Saves me here for, at least for now. The last item that we added to the agenda, this was to consider a bid to remove and replace the roof at the highway shop. Brad?
This one, we kind of sat on a little bit. We talked about it months ago. If you remember, uh, we, we had I don't know which rainstorm it was, the one, the rainstorm, we had a pretty considerable leak down the highway shop and, and, uh, we've known for years that the roof was not in very good shape. About ten or twelve years ago, we replaced the lower deck roof at the same time we did the courthouse. Uh, as we know, that didn't go so good. Well, it's not much better down there. The higher deck still has the four foot asphalt rolled roofing on it and that's what's leaking the worst right now. Uh, we did have Meridian Roofing come out from Topeka. They're the ones that did the courthouse and jail project. Done an exceptional job, uh, and they gave us a bid back in June. Um, with everything else going on, we kind of sat on it and didn't, didn't do anything with it. Chance he brought it to my attention again this week, uh, are we going to do something down there because the roof hasn't gotten any better? Uh, and so I looked at it and I had him reach out to them and see if they would still honor the price. They said they would. Which was a shock to me, given the climate today. Uh, but the, the project to remove what's there uh, and to replace the insulation underneath the foam or
Circle.
slope it down to the corners like it's supposed to be with the, uh, sixty mil stuff that has the, uh, warranty and everything on it. Total price is a hundred and sixty two thousand, six hundred and thirty nine dollars. Uh-oh. And we've looked at the agreement and it all looks in order and we would recommend that we go ahead and honor that. You know, thanks, we've got the money and.
And capital improvements.
Capital improvements to do it.
I think we need.
No, thanks.
We do.
Okay. And, and when would they do the work? Are they?
We'd start on it pretty quick.
Okay.
Cause I think he actually reached out to us to see.
His materials on hand.
It tells me they're probably looking to fill some void.
Well, it's kind of one of those in between projects that might.
Well, it is, you know, we've got a metal building down there that they got the footings in. We're waiting on the steel. Uh, like everybody is. And so once the steel comes in, Wildcat will get that put up and we get this done with the new PPE building. I think with all that one pretty cheap down there. So.
ailstone. And what was the amount again? A hundred and sixty two?
Fifty two, six thirty nine.
Six thirty nine, okay. It has a twenty year manufacturer, no dollar limit material and labor warranty. So I'll go ahead and move that we replace, remove and replace that roof at the highway shop, uh, and accept the bid of a hundred and sixty two thousand, six hundred and thirty nine dollars.
I got it.
We've got the motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anything else to bring before the commission? That's all we have on the agenda.
If you have any thoughts on the sales tax, and you don't have to decide today, but uh, we do have another meeting coming up in October for the ninety one advisory board. But those guys are out there trying to scramble to meet with their cities and their real fire boards and, and if, if you had a feeling one way or another, if you didn't support it, then there's no use in them trying to go out and talk to their boards. If it was something you thought you would support putting on the, on the ballot in the future, what?
I support putting it on. I'd like to, you know, yeah, we, six hundred thousand and we're talking at three million dollars. But are we going to have to renew, are we going to be able to set some other money back? So we didn't have to renew it in five years or whatever it would be, Brad?
So it'd be sunsetted.
Right, yeah.
We are setting in the budget, some money aside for.
And if we're going to sell it, me, if I'm a taxpayer, I want to know, hey, that's just what's going to go in for me. It's not going to raise all the money. But the county's setting aside some money to pick up that other one point five million or whatever it might be to.
Right.
Am I, that, I'm just using figures. I don't know what it's going to be.
Yeah. If, the money that we're setting aside, because we're setting aside money for the public communications and for the hazardous equipment, the rescue trucks, you know, that amounts to maybe a hundred and fifty, maybe a hundred and seventy five between the two of them. It's going to take us a long time to.
We'll never, we'll never make enough. Inflation alone is going to be more than what that's going to set aside.
And we wouldn't be able to, if we did a lease purchase, that we wouldn't have enough money to be able to do that either. That's why the sales tax would help with that.
And that was kind of my thought is if we get the sales tax passed, then, then we've got banks that would be interested in doing a lease purchase with us to do it, as long as they know that there's a solid revenue stream to pay it off. And we could go ahead and get it done in the next year or two.
Well, ultimately it would.
Realize that funding.
And put it back in the hands of the voter and, and taxpayers.
And as important to that is to the people here, it, it puts it back in the hands of your fire departments and your police departments who try to sell it. It's not just on us.
And waiting around, we know what happens when you wait too long.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, uh, I, I mean, the one thing on a good portion of sales tax, it's people that are not just the ones that live here, but the ones that are visiting and driving through and you know, we support a lot of things in other cities and counties whenever we make any purchases, you know, on trips and so on, but.
And Janelle called the state and we do have, uh, we still have a one percent.
Half.
Or half, half percent that we can.
Yes.
We could use. I don't want to use any more and that's why I recommended a quarter. Cause I think people will notice quarters set on, when buying stuff, a whole lot less.
Yeah.
And uh, we're not asking for any more than what it would take to do the project. So, but we'd need to put together a budget before we sold it and everything, but.
You'd add two and a half cents to your cup of coffee at McDonald's.
I don't drink coffee, so I'm off the hook.
There you go.
That's a bit, I, what I'm giving out is, you know, it's it's going to be a sales pitch, you know, we need to get it out to the public, you know, and
Yeah.
You know, the pros and cons of it. I mean, the cons are we can't, I talk to the state. And it's not getting.
Or to town to county.
Yeah, yeah, or to town to county. It's, to me, it's a public safety issue.
You know, the, in the radio world, they used to have really good communications in the county in two thousand thirteen. Because of the congestion nationwide on radio channels, the Federal Communications Commission did what they called narrow banning. So they took every frequency that was assigned that was this wide, they cut them in half. And so it made twice as many spaces for a lot of frequencies. But when they did that, they told everybody upfront, the technology or technical people, they told us all that, that will not degrade your, your distance and range and ability to talk. That wasn't the case. It cut back on anybody now that, when it happened, like flipping the switch. It cut the range down tremendously. Because I know in, in my early days at the county, I could be on a portable in Harrington without the system we have now and talk back to Abilene. Now it was spotty. I could always talk on my car radio. Now down there, they have difficult time talking on their car radio. And it's not just us. It's, it's nationwide, everybody that you talk to. And so it, it also has a big effect on how they can talk locally. Our people within the county, uh, that it would solve that problem as well, so. Probably said more than you want to hear, but it, it is a problem they face every day, so.
Those problems aren't going to go away.
It's not going to go away, right.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Are you have enough information to?
I think so, yeah.
Pull up.
That your consensus is that you, you support giving it to the voters and, yeah. Thank you.
I'll, I'll go ahead and move that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.